Call the Planning Commission meeting for the 27th of February 2019 to order. We have a roll call and determination of a quorum, please.
Chairperson Sattler. Commissioner Borders. Commissioner Dawes. Commissioner Swine. Commissioner Preston. Commissioner Tingle. Commissioner Higgins.
Wiggins.
Wiggins, sorry, Wiggins. Quorum is present.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiggins, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none. For possible action, approval of the minutes from January 15, 2019. Any changes or comments or not a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion from Commissioner Tingle, a second.
A second, that.
Second from Commissioner Dawes. All in favor? Aye, opposed. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, abstain.
Oh, Mr. Borders abstains?
Yes.
And I as well. Abstain.
Commissioner Wiggins abstains. Thank you. The agenda?
No modification. I just want to really note at this point, we're going to take things in order in the agenda, but we have new technology in the room since your last meeting. Obviously, you've figured out the microphone so far, push the button, you get a green light, talk, push the button again to turn it off, but also for the public's sake, when you come to the podium and talk, there's a button push when you get the green light, then the microphone's on.
Meeting items. E1, for discussion only, a presentation by District Attorney Jason Woodbury and Chief Assistant District Dan Yu regarding the upcoming Carson City Municipal Code update, including an update of Title 18 zoning and the associated development standards. Hope?
I'll turn it over to our District Attorney, Jason Woodbury, and his deputy, Dan Yu. They'll be making a presentation.
Welcome, gentlemen. Thanks for coming.
That won't be the last thing I screw up tonight.
I get that all the time.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you to the commission for allowing us some time tonight to talk about what we view as a very important project that's going to be going forward through my office on behalf of Carson City, and it's a project that certainly community development staff is going to be a very important part of, and we hope that this commission is willing to be a very important part of that, too. And that is, basically, we are undertaking what I knew would be a massive project and what is turning out to, as we get into it, be even bigger than I had realized. And what it is, is a comprehensive overrevision of the Carson City Municipal Code. The Carson City Municipal Code is a collection of all of the ordinances that apply in Carson City that have been adopted over the course of Carson City and before that, Ormsby County's existence. It's voluminous, and the issues that we have encountered, as this commission is certainly acutely aware of, is from time to time, you encounter a provision that is in conflict or apparent conflict with another provision. From time to time, you encounter a provision that is not necessarily clear in terms of how you are to apply it, and that is not just with the code that you deal with, it's throughout the code. The Carson City Municipal Code is functional, it's worked for many, many years, and in almost all instances, it works just fine, but it is those instances where it doesn't work fine that we're trying to fix, and to fix, you know, in a way that is valuable for years to come. So that's what we're hoping to talk to you tonight about is sort of how we look at that project. It's definitely a 30,000-foot view that we're trying to give you. There's much more detail if you're at all interested in it, and I invite you to chat with me, or with Dan, or with Mr. Johnson there, if you want some more detail about it. But we just want to give you an idea of what we're going to be doing and how we'd like you to be involved with that as well. So this presentation is for your benefit. Please do not hesitate to interrupt me with questions, because we want you to be beneficial to you. So where we start is, at the bottom, is what do we want the code to be? What does it mean to be a good law? How does that help the community? What attributes do we need to have for that? And we gave a similar presentation to Board of Supervisors at their workshop, and these are what they came up with. They want it to be, and I've kind of grouped them together in the things that are similar, they want it to be clear, they want it to be readable, and in particular, the mayor mentioned that he doesn't want people to have to hire a lawyer to get through the code. He wants people to be able to pick it up and understand it, and that's certainly something we hope to achieve. They want it to be comprehensive, integrated, consistent, cross-referenced within itself, and cross-reference to the Nevada laws that apply. They don't want it to be redundant. They want it to be reasonable, relevant, realistic, enforceable, and they want the benefits to outweigh the costs. And so we certainly invite your input tonight, and continuing, if you think there are additional objectives that we should keep in mind as we go through this process, trying to revise the code. So one thing we want to help everyone understand is that drafting legislation is not nearly as easy as it might seem on its face. And we don't want to come off like we're complaining about our job, or, you know, whining that people just don't understand how hard it is. We think you, making the recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, will make better recommendations if you understand why it's hard, and what makes it hard, and why lawyers, for all the lawyer jokes, sort of why it's hard because of lawyers. And you'd go to law school, and you're sort of trained, I always thought it was amusing, that they train you to think like a lawyer. That's what you're always told. And that really didn't resonate with me, but as time has gone on, thinking like a lawyer really means you take clarity, something that seems very clear, and you manipulate that for your client's interests. You try to manipulate that meaning. Drafting legislation is sort of the opposite of that. You try to make clarity, and so in a way, it's going to be Mr. You and myself against the world of lawyers, trying to make something as clear as we possibly can, even in the face of somebody who might be trying to manipulate that for their client's interests. So you take a provision like this, and this is just kind of a silly example, but what if you had a code provision that said something like, "No building in Carson City may be higher than the Capitol"? Now, to a normal human being, that looks like something that's pretty clear on its face. You can't have a building in Carson City that's higher than the Capitol, but a lawyer can come along, and if the client's interest is served, and the price is right, you can manipulate that. So what if I want to build a cell tower, and I want the cell tower to be higher than the Capitol? Well, I'd say the cell tower's not a building, so this code provision clearly doesn't apply to that. You can just sort of see how something that seems clear, there might be a number of circumstances where you find something to fight about, something to argue about, something to make not clear. And what we have traditionally done in the past, and what is actually, you know, a rule of statutory construction, is that when there is a lack of clarity, you go back to the legislative intent, right? The quote-unquote legislative intent, and we've all heard that. And that can be dangerous. And first of all, if we have to, if we draft a code, and you approve, you recommend a code, and the board approves a code, that requires us to go back and look at legislative intent, we failed. Because a clear code, a clear provision, you should never have to do that. It should be clear on its face, and you never have to get to that. And the danger is this. So let's say we've got that code provision that says, "No building in Carson City is going to be higher than the Capitol." So we go back, and, you know, we've got recordings of all the proceedings, and we can go back and actually listen to the proceeding where that code, that provision was adopted. And they actually had that discussion. Okay, what does it mean higher than the Capitol? And this particular discussion is, are we talking about the dome of the Capitol? Are we talking about the flagpole on top of the Capitol? What are we talking about? So we've got this board, who's the one that adopted that, and Supervisor Shirk at the time says, "The flagpole is the top." And Supervisor About chimes in, "I agree." Supervisor Bonkowski says, "It's a dumb idea, and he's going to vote no." Supervisor Bagwell says, "I'm a no, Carson City needs a skyscraper." And then Mayor Kroll doesn't say anything, but what he's thinking is, "I think the top is the dome, but we've been on this item for hours, I'm hungry, and I want to go home, so I'm not starting a debate. So I'm a yes." So you've got two people on the record saying they think the top is a flagpole, and that's all that's been stated on the record by the people who voted in favor of the provision. In fact, there is not a majority of the board that believes the flagpole is the top, but that becomes the rule, because you've got poor Lee over there listening to this provision that's adopted, and the only thing he hears is, "The top is the flagpole." And I've got a picture of Lee, this is the newest one I could find, but, so that's just Lee having trouble with that. And the point of this is that you've now divorced the enforcement of that provision from the actual text of the code. The text is, "No building in Carson City can be higher than the Capitol," but what you're actually enforcing in reality is that no building in Carson City can be higher than the top of the flagpole on the Capitol dome. And that's, like I say, it's kind of a silly example, but that gives you an idea of how important it's going to be to be as precise as we can in the language that we take to the Board of Supervisors, and certainly the language that comes out of the Board of Supervisors is going to be very important, because you'll eventually be the ones, along with citizens in Carson City, who are being guided by that. So what happens in that instance, when you've got a divorce between the reality of the code and the text of the code, is you get the troublemakers who start asking, "Why is this the rule?" And sometimes it's a supervisor, sometimes it's staff, sometimes it's a member of the public, and our worst-case scenario is the lawsuit, that they're saying, "You are not enforcing the text of the code." And the last place we want to be is defending that on the basis of, "Well, we've always done it that way," because that legally is not, it's meaningless. I mean, it's just not a position that we can defend in court. So that's what we're trying to get to. So more nuts and bolts of how we're going to try to get to the outcome we want. We are right now in the process of drafting a drafting manual, and when I say "we," that's Dan. We are really fortunate to have Dan. Dan spent many, many years in the Legislative Council Bureau, where that's their profession. I mean, they draft bills and laws and regulations and do this day in and day out. So Dan has the expertise that we need to put together this kind of project. We just wouldn't be able to do it without him. So Dan is preparing a drafting manual, and this is not going to be, you know, a 10-page document. It's going to talk about the minutia of minutia, and when you should use "shall" instead of "must," and all sorts of things like that. And certainly, that's for the people drafting the manual, but it's also for you, to help you understand, and you're not expected certainly to know the intricacies of that. That's our job. But if you can have a familiarity, we're going to make that available to everybody, and if you can have a familiarity with the rules that we are trying to follow, I think it might help you provide some better recommendations to the board. So Dan is going to have that completed by June 30 of this year. He's been working a long time on it and working very hard on it. But from there, where we go, is a comprehensive review of the existing code. And what we're looking for in that process is the low-hanging fruit. What are the provisions that clearly conflict with one another? What are the cross-references to Nevada statute that have expired or are no longer tied to the original provision, or what have you? It's just really a cleanup. So those are the things we're going to be trying to do, and that's in the second half of this year, calendar year 2019. And we're going to go from there into preparing a structural outline. There are, some of the organization of the code doesn't make complete sense, and some chapters should be in other titles, and some titles should probably be moved. So just getting together a structural outline of the code and how the whole thing should look. From there, we'll go to sort of what we call Stage Two of that, and we will be going through the code title by title, and actually changing the substance of the code. So where we start is with the preliminary title. That's going to have your definitions that apply throughout the entire code. For instance, there'll be a definition in there that says, "The Board of Supervi," the "Board," the quote-unquote "Board" with the capital B, means the Board of Supervisors. And when we say "person," we mean person, and we mean a corporation, and it'll have those, you know, definitions that apply throughout the code. So that's the first thing we'll be working on. And then, other low-hanging fruit that we've got that doesn't necessarily concern this board or this commission, is we start with Criminal and Traffic, Title 8 and Title 10. That's low-hanging fruit for us, because the vast majority of those provisions are going to be cut and paste from the Nevada revised statutes, which will be consistent with the drafting manual that we'll have put together. So we hope to, we expect to have that done in the first or second quarter of 2020. And then we get to the big one, and that's you guys. That's Title 17 and Title 18 are going to be the next thing that we take on. And our vision for how that works is that we're relying primarily, and that's a substantive kind of revision. This is not just cleaning up language. This is not just making the code consistent with, throughout, although that's an important part of it. But that's a substantive look at, is, do these provisions work for us? Or is there some other direction that we want to recommend to the board, that we want to have staff look at, and that we want to discuss about that? So we'll be certainly relying mainly on staff to do that, and I know that staff will be vetting that through you. I know it's important for the Board of Supervisors to have, in particular, this commission's input on Title 17 and 18, mainly Title 18, but that's a big one. I mean, that's the biggest, most complex, most voluminous title that we have. And we're, our target right now is to get through that in nine months. And we'll adjust, it's obviously more important to do it right than to do it quickly, but we'll adjust that if we need to. But that's an aggressive target, but that's nine months from when we start drafting. That certainly is not intended to say, "Okay, you guys should just all be waiting around until you get to your nine months." We're hopeful that, as we go throughout the rest of this year and the first couple quarters of 2020, that those discussions with staff happen, and that, you know, when it's time, when we're ready, that we have a package of substantive changes and substantive ideas that you're ready to give to Dan and I, that we can take and sort of put in the language of the code as we're trying to do it. We don't intend, I expect we'll be involved a little bit in the substance, legal procedures and things like that. You know, we'll have some input about that. But by and large, the substance of it, and what you want the code to be, and what staff wants the code to recommend to the board, that's the prerogative of this body and staff, to put that substance together. We're just trying to put that in, into the language that has it make sense with the rest of the code and with Nevada law. So it goes on from there. You know, it's about, we've targeted four years for the completion of all the titles in the code. And then from there, there's sort of a Stage Three, where it's continuous improvement of the code. It's not going to be perfect, so we'll look for opportunities after that to continue to refine it and make it, you know, as effective for everybody as it can be. But Stage Two is going to be, is going to be a challenging process, but we're hoping to take it on and, you know, produce a product that's really effective. I can tell you that Carson City is by no means unique in terms of its code. In fact, as far as codes go throughout the state, ours is, I would say, one of the better ones. And, you know, you're talking jurisdictions like Washoe County and Clark County and things like that. It's, this problem is not unique to us. And I don't mean to imply that it's anybody's fault either, that people are trying to take a piece of law and make it work. And, you know, because of their jobs, or because maybe they didn't have the expertise, it made it work for that, but maybe it made it inconsistent for something else, or, and it just became a collection instead of what we hope it to be, you know, sort of a unified, consistent piece of legislation that we're looking for. So I'll shut up now, and let, Dan, do you have anything to add?
You know, I'd just like to say for the record, this sounds like a lot of work. I don't know what I signed up for, so I'm going to sign this over to Ben Johnson over here. No, we'll have to take this on. I think Jason's hit all the points, and, you know, one of the things that I kind of want to circle back on that he started with was, you know, when it comes to legislative drafting, you know, proper legislative drafting, what we're always talking about is the intent of the body that's enacting the ordinance or the statute, you know, the regulation, the resolution, wherever the case may be. And, you know, the driving force behind that is always the intent of the body. And, you know, Jason has identified, you know, quite, you know, aptly here, you know, all the problems with having to go back and look at legislative history to ascertain that sort of intent. And so, of course, you know, the overriding motive and the objective to be accomplished here is to make sure that we capture the intent correctly the first time, and the way we do that is to make sure that the language that's being codified in our code of ordinances is plain, it's unambiguous on its face, so that there's never any need necessarily to go back and try to ascertain, you know, the intent of the body that enacted it perhaps years or even decades ago. A lot of times, you know, there's a deficiency in those sort of, you know, legislative archived materials, so it's difficult to accomplish that from time to time. And as Jason pointed out, sometimes there's even ambiguity on the record as to, well, what was actually the intent, if you can't ascertain that just from the language itself. So that's certainly one of our overarching objectives here, is to make sure that we capture at all times the legislative intent of, you know, all of our boards, our commissions, our committees, and then, of course, the Board of Supervisors as well. That is, you know, the driving force for this, you know, overall, you know, overhaul of CCMC. You know, the kind of way, the way I look at it is, it's, you know, we have this vehicle in place, and it's always, you know, it's always in motion, right? I mean, that's our CCMC provisions. It's one large locomotive, it's always in motion, and we're just trying to, and as Jason pointed out, you know, to a great extent, it works, it functions, it accomplishes what we needed to accomplish on a day-to-day basis. It's something that provides guidance and guidelines and parameters for our staff and for the attorneys at the DA's office. And, you know, what Jason and I want to do, and this is, you know, one of Jason's mission objectives, you know, as part of his administration, is we want to put a really nice polish on this locomotive, and, you know, just kind of make sure that we, you know, clean off all the dirt and grime, and make sure that it's, you know, as clear and unambiguous as possible, not only for staff and for the city employees and the DA's office, and, you know, for the attorneys and everyone else that's involved in the process, but also for members of the public. John and Jane Doe should be able to read it, open up the books, and understand exactly what they're reading, what their obligations are, what the requirements are, and what their rights are as well.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Go ahead.
Can I just add, just to add on what's, regarding Title 18, talk a little bit about in particular. So the, you can see, this is going to be a very long process. Obviously, it is a big, big job to rewrite Title 18, and as he said, we're not going to go away and wait until they're ready to do that. We're, in fact, the direction from the Board of Supervisors is to start the discussions with the Planning Commission, and just for example, kind of one small part would be to look at what uses are permitted and what zoning districts. Can some of those uses be combined into different descriptions, and then to be able, when they're ready, to hand that over then, to draft it into a new format, into the title. So we do plan in 2019 to start bringing these discussions to the Planning Commission, to start working on it. Also, in having discussion with them, there are some things that are hanging out there, like accessory dwellings, or other things that might come up that need to be fixed sooner rather than later, and we'll still bring those forward, and those types of corrections, to put into the current ordinance with the understanding that it'll be rewritten with, in the bigger changes later.
I was going to ask, as these sections are done, will they be implemented? Are you going to wait until everything's done, say, in four years before everything is in, or what? How will that?
We'll implement them title by title. We've tried to design this project so that each step has independent value. So the creation of the drafting manual has value. I mean, if you, even if you, even if you don't go forward with the rest of the project, it at least gives you a map of, going forward, here's what you should be doing. And there's just practical reasons for that. You know, if a recession hits and, you know, staff is cut, we may not be able to move forward with this project. We may have to put it on hold. So it's very important that we wanted each step to have independent value. So they'll, answering your question directly, these titles will be implemented as they are completed. I think it's important to implement a title as a whole, so the board is able to see the whole picture of the title as they do that, but there's no need to wait and do all the titles at once. But I do also want to echo what Lee said, that, you know, if you, the way I've tried to explain it to people is, we're sort of in break-fix mode right now. So if there's a broken piece of the code, we want to fix it. I mean, there's no need to wait and say, "Hey, well, you got to wait, you know, a year and a half until we're on Title 18." If there's an urgency, we'll move forward with staff and get that fixed.
Well, and I see our role more being possibly to, looking at things that come to us constantly, maybe by making some minor changes. Over time, they've been affected or whatever. For example, the dwelling size being added, you know, we might modify that. That would simplify where not as many have to come forward, too, to be considered. But again, we kind of look at the general overview, give it to you folks to then put it in line as to how it has to be to work in the system, so.
I also know that the Board of Supervisors is interested in reworking the master plan. And I just want to make sure that we get all of this in concert, because I would hate to have us do all this work on title revision, and then we decide halfway through that we're going to change the master plan a little bit, and it's going to totally change some of these titles again. So I'm hoping that... So I, I'm hoping that we're aware that that may also happen and we've got that considered as we move forward, recognizing that the titles are the titles and the, and the master plan is a planning document, but they, they've got to fit together.
Agree. And, and I think that's important.
Well, and I, I think quite a few of the board, et cetera, feel that Title eighteen cleaning that up may help a lot with what's going on in the master plan as well, so to help clarify that. Questions or comments?
Thank you for your time. Appreciate being here. Thanks.
Moving on. Public hearing, E2, SUP-18-166 for possible action to consider request for a special use permit for a new 70-foot-tall wireless communication facility on property zone retail commercial RC. The subject property is located at 3331 South Carson Street, APN 009-112-17. Heather?
Thank you. Heather Ferris, Associate Planner for the Record. Before I get into the specifics of this particular request, I do want to take a minute to touch on the relationship between the federal and local laws with regard to wireless communication facilities. The Federal Telecommunications Act regulates wireless facilities and prohibits local governments from writing ordinances that impose unreasonable barriers to the sighting of towers or antennas and the provisions of wireless services. Local governments cannot discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services, prohibit or effectively prohibit wireless service provisions, or regulate wireless facilities based on the environmental effect of radio frequency emissions, assuming facilities are in compliance with FCC regulations. Local governments do have the ability to regulate the location and design elements of towers, setbacks and screening requirements, and different standards for residential zone districts, historic districts, or environmentally sensitive areas. Carson City Municipal Code related to the sighting of such facilities are based on requirements of the Telecommunications Act and generally provide guidance with regard to location, height, setbacks and screening. With that background, I'll now get into the requests that's before the commission today. Carson City Municipal Code 18.15 requires approval of a special use permit for construction and operation of a wireless telecommunication facility in any non-residentially zoned district unless the tower is proposed as a co-location on an existing tower and does not increase the height of the tower by more than 10 feet, the tower meets the height restrictions of the proposed zoning district, or the tower does not increase the height of an existing structure that already exceeds the height limit of that particular zoning district. The applicant is proposing the construction of a 70-foot-tall monopole wireless communication facility with an 18-foot by 32-foot lease area at 3331 South Carson Street. The property is zoned retail commercial, which has a 45-foot height limit. Therefore, the proposed 70-foot tower requires approval of a special use permit as it exceeds this height limit. The lease area will house the proposed monopole as well as equipment cabinet to house battery packs to provide backup power to the site. The applicant has confirmed that there will be no generator on site. A personal storage and retail office complex is currently operated at this location. The property is surrounded on three sides by commercially zoned properties with residentially zoned properties to the east. So this is an overall site plan. The lease area is in the northern, near the northern property line, approximately midway between the front and rear property lines. This just depicts the lease area. It includes the tower and equipment cabinets, and the lease area will be fenced and gated for security. As I'm sure you all recall, this was originally scheduled to be heard by the Planning Commission at the January 30th, 2019 meeting. However, staff did request a continuance at that time to continue to work with the applicant on the aesthetics of the tower. As you can see from this slide and the next, the applicant is proposing the use of a radome, which is that cylinder that essentially conceals the individual antennas to provide more of a stealth appearance. Additionally, the applicant will be required to paint the tower a neutral color, such as tan. So this photo simulation is the view from Carson Street. And this is the view from the residential neighborhood to the east. And the tower appears in both of those slides on the, the bottom photo simulation. There's also additional photo sims in your packet. Carson City Development Standards Division 1.9 outlines the requirements for wireless telecommunication facilities. A detailed summary of how this application meets the standards is included in your staff report, and I'd be happy to go over any of that in detail if the Planning Commission has questions. So we have gotten some inquiries, both from the Planning Commission as well as the public, on the status of a special use permit that was approved in 2015 for Verizon. This was for an 80-foot tower to the south of the Fandango Casino and the hotel. The chair did ask that I include a slide showing the location. So as I stated, this was an 80-foot monopole utilizing a similar design to the, the tower that's before you this evening. The tower was never built and the special use permit expired. Based on our research and discussions with the applicant, we're unsure as to why this never moved forward. So getting back to this evening's request, as you all know, there are seven findings of fact that the Planning Commission must make in the affirmative in order to approve a special use permit. Based on public comments we've received, I believe we have 20 of them now that you all have copies of. I'm going to focus on finding two, which requires that a finding be made that the project will not be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value or development of surrounding properties or the general neighborhood, and will cause no objectionable noise, vibrations, fumes, odors, dust, glare or physical activity. Staff was able to make finding two in the affirmative because the ground-mounted portions of the facility will be screened from view with existing vegetation and buildings. The visual impact from the portion of the structure that extends above the existing buildings will be minimized with the use of the radome to conceal the individual antennas. Additionally, the tower will be required to be painted a neutral color. The tower also exceeds the minimum setbacks from the residentially zoned properties. Division 1.9 of the Development Standards requires a setback four times that of the height from any residentially zoned properties, which would require, in this case, a 280-foot setback. This tower is a little over 400 feet from the residentially zoned properties to the east. And finally, the applicant provided a noise study with the application. That noise study indicated that the noise generated from the facility will be approximately equivalent to rustling leaves or refrigerator humming. And that is outside noise, once you're in the building, in, in a building, obviously there's some noise attenuation. After discussions with the applicant, staff is recommending changes to condition 13 to help clarify the language. The modified condition would read, "The applicant shall reasonably allow for co-location of at least one other provider's antennas on the structure by limiting the costs to the providers to a fair and equitable share of the ground lease, design, capital costs for construction and reasonable maintenance consistent with industry standards." I would ask that you please incorporate this change into any motion for approval. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Matt Moore is here representing the applicant, and he may wish to address the commission, and I'm available for questions.
Questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward, please? Welcome. First of all, would you state your name, please, for us?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matthew Moore. I am an authorized agent of Verizon Wireless and the applicant for our Fandango project here. Rather than reiterate staff's presentation, presentation, which was fantastic, I'd like to kind of preemptively address some of the questions or kind of concerns that might be here with this project. For starters, in regards to the previously approved project with the expired permit, I was able to do some extra digging. It was handled initially by a different site acquisition from the mine, so we just don't get all of the paperwork in those transitions. The indications were that...
Oh, sorry, maybe you had it...
Oh, I didn't realize it wasn't plugged in. Sorry.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. So indications were that there were, you know, six months to a year of contractual negotiations and the terms, they couldn't come to terms, and so they had to let the permit expire. You know, Verizon wouldn't put the time and money to secure the permit and then just abandon it for no reason. Briefly, just, I work for a site acquisition firm, like I said. There are many companies like mine, and the way that these things work is Verizon's radio frequency engineers find deficiencies within the network, either gaps in coverage or existing facilities are being overloaded by user traffic and shutting down. And so what they'll do is they will print out what's called a search ring, and it's just a circle on a map, and they will send that to firms like ours and say, we need a tower here somewhere in the ring. The search ring for this particular project was issued in 2013. Again, it was with another firm. They found a site. Things fell through in the contract, negotiations. My company picked the project up in 2017, about midway through 2017. Same search ring, same search area. We pinged all of the properties that were appropriate. We looked for four main things. We need a ready and willing landlord who's willing to work with Verizon. It has to work for the Verizon radio frequency engineers. It has to abide by local zoning regulations, and it has to be constructible. We have to be able to build it and get our utilities to there. And so within the search ring itself, we thoroughly scrubbed the ring. It is always our preference, we're not insensitive to the fact that people want these facilities to be further away from their neighborhoods, but the reality is sometimes we can't find other properties and just the way that the technology works, they do have to be relatively close to the areas that they're intended to serve. And so for this project, the intent is to cover a gap in coverage along Highway 50 to maintain continuity of coverage, bring additional coverage to the commercial and residential areas that do have deficient coverage, and also alleviate traffic from other existing facilities and the surrounding areas that are being overloaded by user traffic and starting to suffer functionality issues. Additionally, I know that there were some current concerns about the design. We did show the radome just to cover up the antennas. I think it was maybe on Friday, I also sent Heather a batch of photo sims showing the facility as a monopine. I think that it looks really good from a screening standpoint, but I want everybody to be aware that in order to make it look like a monopine, we have to add about seven additional feet to the overall height. We have to put a crown on there to kind of keep it realistic looking. And that's all I have for now, but I'll gladly answer any questions.
First of all, you accept the conditions as written with the modification in number 13?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Going back with a little, I was here for the earlier one, and we were always sensitive to our entrances into our town as far as, you know, where these go, et cetera. And compliments, for example, the one on Stewart Street, that's the water tower. I mean, it's really, I think, looks quite, quite good there. I do appreciate here the fact that you're using center of the location, so the building's blocking all the lower stuff, et cetera. Obviously, across the way, it wouldn't have affected as many houses in the other location, but it's sitting in a parking lot there as well, so. But anyway, that was my only comments. But any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Tingle?
So you made reference to a coverage area of Highway 50.
Yes.
Is that Highway 50 from 395 South going up to the lake? Is that Highway 50 from Carson Street?
Highway 50 immediately around our project. We have pretty good coverage to the north, so it is further to the south along Carson Street there. There, there are two facilities, 1.4 miles to the north and 1.4 miles northeast of our proposed location. Part of this facility's objective is to offload capacity from those. So it's to cover the immediate area and to offload those.
Okay, because it, it would seem to me that if you are looking at covering Highway 50 corridor coming down from Lake Tahoe to 395, that it would make a little bit more sense to utilize the Casino Fandango location than it would this one, but that's just a personal observation. I, I'm just kind of a little bit confused about why you're looking at covering a Highway 50 corridor when you're like not close to Highway 50.
They were, both locations were in the search ring, and so both were flagged as meeting the intended coverage objectives. The Fandango Casino was the initial choice, but it fell through. In terms of trade-off, the radio frequency engineers said that this site works just as well for their objectives. If it didn't, we would not be here today, I promise.
So again, looking at the different angles, with the building, existing buildings, if you're looking at a 70-foot tower, you're probably have, what, about the top 40 feet of that extended above the house, the buildings or whatever?
Roughly.
Okay. And if they were to make it a tree or something, you just would add another seven feet.
Yes, and I mean, this is a, a representation of the facility as a 77-foot-tall monopole. Or monopine, sorry.
For the applicant? Seeing none?
The determination of how tall it needed to be?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure it was gradient. You, you print these coverage maps based on five-foot increments or so, and you look for the best, best coverage you can get?
When we receive...
At the altitude that you've, you need?
Uh, when we receive our search rings from the RF engineers, they just put a minimum functional height for the antenna center line. And so, you know, we don't do that stuff in-house. We get it directly from Verizon.
And what was the minimum functional height?
Uh, 66 feet, which is the center line here.
Okay.
If someone else were to share, would this normally go up higher or would they hang below the existing or that would depend or?
It would depend on what their coverage objectives were and kind of what their engineers flag as the minimum center line needed. But there would certainly be space below our antennas for co-location purposes.
And if that were to happen, staff, I'm aware that that would have to come back if it was going to go any higher than the existing that's approved tonight, it would have to come back to us, correct?
That is correct.
Questions for staff or for the applicant? Commissioner Doors?
Commissioner Doors for the record. For staff, you'd said if the next co-lease is 10 feet or less higher than this proposed one, it doesn't have to come in front of us again, correct?
So there's, there's three different measures essentially. So one is if it doesn't increase the height by 10 feet, one is if it doesn't increase the height at all, and one is if it increases the height of a structure that already exceeds the height limit. So this would already exceed the height limit and it would have to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we'll open this for public comment. If you would come forward and state your name when you get to the microphone, and remember to hit your button and see the green light. Appreciate it. Thank you. Seeing that quite a few of you are probably here, how this normally operates, we will listen to the public comment and we won't respond as it's being given. We will try to answer... We will try to answer or address any concerns or questions after it's all been presented.
My name is Daniel Knox. I, let's see, my name is Daniel Knox. I reside at 346 Springview Drive here in Carson City with my wife, and I'm respectfully requesting that Carson City Planning Commission deny special use permit 18-166 based on the following. Number one, I object that this tower will detract from my unobstructed view of the mountains. I believe that this obstruction will have a negative impact on my property values. To believe that painting a cylindrical ray dome and supporting structure will mitigate the, will mitigate the visual impact of the tower is absurd. I had submitted information to staff concerning a stealth approach to the antenna array by utilizing a look-alike pine tree structure. It would minimize the visual impact because it would blend with other pine trees that are within a very close proximity. Verizon and other carriers have done this with other sites when it was a requirement of officials. If the commission were to approve the height increase from what now is a 45-foot limitation, future colocation requirements will dictate an increase in height to accommodate additional carriers. The FCC encourages carriers to enter colocation agreements, and so does a city, but those incremental increases of 10 feet, as stated in the staff report, are not a maximum for a colocation partner. The FCC allows each colocation separation not to exceed 20 feet. Therefore, it is possible this tower could eventually reach 110 feet in height. Item three, statistics are widely available that what has happened when just the perception of what affects a cell tower's transmission can cause on health. Studies prove property values can diminish by more than 10% when a cell tower is in close proximity. If approved, this cell site will impact my property value. Item four, Verizon submitted a noise study report that did not include a generator. Submittals include the electrical service connection for a generator and claiming the generator is only exercised once each week. A contrary statement notes that the applicant confirms that a generator is not proposed at this site. Therefore, for clarification, I request that an additional requirement for approval be added that specifically states a generator will not be located at this location throughout the life of the project, and I think that's reasonable. Lastly, another site, as was already mentioned, has already been approved of Verizon, and I know it's expired, but specifically the original Fandango project, which was special use permit 10, 15-095, that approved an 80-foot monopole located at 3910 South Carson Street. So therefore, I believe the planning commission should directly ask Verizon why this new proposed site has preference over an already approved site with the same coverage map. Lastly, I ask each and every member of this board that if you vote to approve this 70-foot structure over objections by me and others, we implore you to include a requirement that it be camouflaged as a pine tree design. And I thank the planning commission for the opportunity to express my concerns, and I would also like to add for the record, this is U.S. Code of Federal Regulations having to do with colocation, and this on page two states that they can go up to 20 feet for each colocation in height, not 10 feet. And I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael Nubbins. I live at 310 Sandalwood Drive, and this project definitely affects my property and the potential value of my property. Even if it's hidden as a pine tree, it will still exceed all the pine trees on Sandalwood Drive based on the picture that was shown up earlier. And this indeed would affect our property, as everyone coming down that, on Sandalwood, heading west, will see this huge fake pine tree, and it will decrease the value of our properties. And we also noted that there is electromagnetic energy that is made by the cell tower. Now, your staff has said there is no detrimental health issues. Now, I'm not sure about that. I don't know how much study was put into this. I'm pacemaker-dependent, and I'm concerned, I can't even carry a cellphone in my chest pocket anymore, and I can't use my left ear to use my cellphone because of the problems it causes with the pacemaker. And I'm wondering if your staff has actually looked into this at a reasonable level and talked to cardiologists and pacemaker manufacturers. So I'm against this location, and if it was to go any higher than the 90 feet or whatever they're talking about now, it would even decrease our property values more. I would like the board to say no to this project, and if they do approve it, to limit it to the 45-foot. Other words, find another location. I mean, you have the location at the Fandango. We have a city park over by Costco in Bodines closer to Highway 50 as Ms. Tingle had mentioned earlier, and I feel that just the location so close to residential on the east side that the project should be denied. No one has talked about the time of the project to build it, and the noise level, and the possible pollution. The floodplain is right below, back on the east side of the project, which is basically just a water, what do you call it, like a pool? And I don't know if that would affect the project or not, but I'm requesting that the application be denied, and I thank you for your time.
My name is Gene Erskine.
Make sure it's green, sir. Hit the button, and it should turn green right at the base of the stem. Here you go.
My name is Gene Erskine. I own property at 3129, 3139, 3149 South Carson. I've been in business there for 40 years under the trade name House of Drake, and I've been in electronics for that 40 years. And I honestly can't understand why that Verizon, on December the 15th, 2016, were, were approved for an 80-foot tower. And they have never used that approval. They've never used the, and I don't know why, because this was in a location much more desirable for their type of operation over behind Carson Gaming. And we, I can only say that if this is allowed to go in, in the location that's stated, there would be an awful, awful lot of very unhappy people because there's a large mobile home park there. There's the, the storage facility where this is to go has some 200 and some people entering and leaving every day for their storage. And, and I can only say that, that they should, what I would like to say is that the state of Nevada owned or controlled South Carson Street up until just less than a month ago, I guess, and then they turned South Carson Street back over to Carson City. Now, the reason they did this is they claimed that they were going to put in a beautification committee and make lower Carson City look more like the center of Carson City, which is beautiful. And so, the first thing I hear afterward is this 80-foot mousetrap. To be stuck right in the middle of, of South Carson City is certainly not part of the beautification committee that, that they talked about. And if anyone here needs to be familiarized with this tower and what it looks like, let them go up Fairview opposite the National Guard Armory up there behind the bottling company and see one that's installed. And it's a real first-class eyesore. So I, that's all I've got to say, but thanks for your time. Thanks for having me.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Jones. I live at 3328 Bonneview Drive. My property is immediately adjacent to the property that we're discussing tonight, and I want to adamantly ask the commission to deny this, the approval of this, because I agree with the other speakers, this is going to certainly affect, certainly affect the value of our property. And also, with my property being, abutting the property in question, it is certainly going to detract from any attempt to use my backyard and enjoy the peace and tranquility that I know that is Carson City. I just don't believe that this commercial entity should enhance its revenue stream at the expense of the citizens. We deserve to have a comfortable place to enjoy our homes, and if there was any possibility of, perhaps, looking at the Fandango property again, I think we should do that, because it seems to be a more logical place to put a tower of that height. Thank you.
Ernie Walsh, I'm the owner of the property at 393 Sandalwood, which is right at the end of the street where you're looking at the tower. I adamantly oppose this in, in the fact that you set up regulations within certain districts for certain things, and if they want a tower at 45 feet, let them, let them proceed with their tower. There's not much we could do because it would be within their regulations, your regulations. But just to, for the benefit of a few people, to impose the additional height and the eyesore, I'm glad they came with the idea of proposing a pine tree, but at 70 feet, it's still going to look very unrealistic. So if you do approve it, I strongly recommend some of the things the other people said, that you have a condition, no generators now or ever, that the, I don't know why, that the colocation thing, how many people can have other transmitters or the more height that, is that reasonable, that they can just come in and apply for another application to extend that for a colocation? More, more antennas?
Respond to everything at the end.
Okay. So it just looks to me like it's kind of an unlimited open door for colocations, and here again, it's pretty high to be in the middle of town and pretty close to a residential. I know the setback was talked about, but even so, that's still affecting, everybody east of that tower is residential. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, sir. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for further discussion. As far as some of the things that were mentioned, the generator, there is not going to be a generator with this project. We can possibly address the idea of adding a condition, whatever, that no generator would be there. Actually, heard from several, if it has to be there, the tree would be a better thing than, than just the pole, and I think that's something we can consider. As far as the view, there's no way, unfortunately, you can guarantee a view for anyone. I know we all want to keep a nice view, but if it's going to be in the view, let's try to make it as, you know, acceptable as possible. As far as the FCC controls, as far as the, what's put out by these, and obviously, they have to meet, this will meet whatever has to be done to be healthy and safe to be around, et cetera, et cetera, because that, but that's not controlled by Carson City or by us. But they would not be able to put this in unless, if it was a health risk to be where it was going to be within any range of the houses, the storage unit, or anything else, that would all be, come under the federal people. So that's some of it. Anyone else or staff want to address any of the other items?
I think you covered all of it.
I think that covers most of it, but...
Commissioner Doors, I have three things. As far as adding a generator, or actually, as far as a provision of never adding a generator, being that putting a generator on that location probably wouldn't go against what it's currently zoned as to begin with, is that something that we're even able to do?
We could stipulate that, and one of our requirements, that the generator could not be put there at any time.
We, we can, for sure.
I believe so.
Because it's a discretionary permit, yes, we can.
Okay. The second thing, I think it's important to note, it was sort of presented as, well, this is one of the only locations that fit out of a certain number of properties. I do think it's very important to note that this is a business decision. It's not a water tower, it's not a fire department building. This is a business decision. So it's one of the properties that works for a business, and I think that it's important to keep that distinction. And then, the third thing I wanted to bring up in hearing that, I think that the commission does understand that the property across the street, the deal, the property across the street, the deal seemingly fell through. I think we all understand that that can happen, but I think it's sort of important, I, I just want to go on the record, as, as I agree that it's important to maybe revisit that. They had approval in a place where it was far less impactful on the community, and both sides couldn't work together to make it happen. That doesn't mean that we're, that anybody is, obviously, it doesn't mean that anybody is obligated to approve a separate property. So I wanted that on the record, that's not really a question. And that's all I got right now, thanks.
One other item, as far as the stacking or additional, they could hang anything below that in the tree or whatever it is without having to come back here. If they want to add anything that adds more than 10 feet going up, it has to come back to the planning commission for approval. So we're only approving the 70-foot or 77-foot, if it was a tree, that's all they would be getting approval on tonight. So if they had, if they wanted to do anything different, they could hang all they wanted below, which has been done and can be done, but if it went up, that would have to come back to the planning commission.
That's correct. Any increase in height over what's approved tonight, if it's approved, would require an additional special use permit.
Yeah, don't, I, I think it's a misnomer to say 10 more feet.
No, it's any, any addition.
If, if we, if we say that the tower can only be 67 feet and 3/4 of an inch, any, anything above that requires a new permit.
Comes back.
Yeah, comes back, regardless of what the statute says, because this is a special condition.
And obviously, oh, Commissioner Pressman?
Yeah, working with the state and working with emergency resources, one of the most difficult things of any area is getting coverage for, for instance, the emergency NHP, you know, anything that, that can happen, fire, earthquake, whatever. And typically, when... And typically, when some of those things happen, the power is out and a generator is needed. So my question is on this, is that a lot of times, they like to co-locate on an existing tower. And if we put down the condition that at no time can there be a generator used on this site, then it eliminates it for emergency services. So I think I have a concern about that.
Is that, even if it has a battery pack situation there?
It does have a battery pack.
But it only goes for a certain amount of time.
Do we have any information on the battery pack and how useful it is from the applicant?
Would you come forward on that again for us, please? Thank you. I think the battery pack takes the place of the generator.
So at this site, at this site, there are two battery packs. And so what will happen, if power goes out, the batteries will kick in. With our antennas and the setup here, it's relatively small, so the battery pack could last anywhere from twelve to twenty-four hours. But Commissioner Preston is correct, it is set up so that in times of emergency, we can roll a generator in and plug it in for the purpose of keeping the facility running. And I believe, I didn't look over the code provisions specifically for Carson City, but every other jurisdiction that I've worked in has provisions where, in emergency times or power outages and things like, the noise standards are set aside. And so the absolute only time Verizon would bring a generator to this site is if power went out and there was an emergency. And so if you're going to craft something, please take that into consideration as well.
So if we put that in there, would that mean that the site wouldn't work for you as well then, obviously?
No, it would work until the power goes out, and then it won't work, and then that becomes more of a local problem until the infrastructure.
I guess what I'm asking, if we were to add the absolutely no generator through the life of the project, would that cause you to maybe consider moving that or not doing that project if that were put in?
I would have to run it by Verizon. I've never seen a condition where we're not allowed to bring one in during emergencies. So it would be a first, first time going over that for me.
All right, thank you. Any other questions while he's there?
And if I could provide-
Commissioner Ashwin?
I just wanted to provide one more point of clarification. The height for the zone is forty-five feet, but the code does provide that wireless facilities are allowed in these zones at the minimum functional height up to one hundred and twenty feet. So while we are reaching the height for the zone itself, we're still within the code in terms of how wireless facilities are supposed to be designed and sited.
I forgot what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
I have one question. One is, if we were to require it as a pine tree, how would that affect the additional co-locations? Is it feasible to actually co-locate on a, you know, a pine tree structure?
It is, and in terms of these facilities, I know people were talking about water tanks and stuff, the mono pines are really the best for the co-location because you can stick them into the dense branches already, add additional antenna socks, and you're really not going to be able to tell the difference between this facility as it is now and with one or two additional carriers. With the water tank, if you fill up space within that tank, then the only option is you start mounting antennas on the legs and stuff like that. And so unless you want a thirty-foot, you know, tall tank itself that can accommodate multiple carriers, it would, this is the best option.
And from talking to staff, a water tank wouldn't work here because the footprint's not big enough.
I would have to look at that, but I would imagine so.
It'd be real close, I think, is what we are looking at. But the pine seems to be a solution, more acceptable than what we were showing. Commissioner Wiggins? Oh, go ahead, if you were still going?
My other comment. Yes, I did.
Sure. How do, how do we know the quality of this monopole that's going to look like a pine tree? In other words, are we going to end up with Charlie Brown's tree, or are we going to have a quality-looking tree? How can you, I saw the, this, of course, but of course, once you get up close to it, it's probably going to look a lot different.
Sure. And there can be some variation because essentially, what we'll do is bid these out to vendors that build the things. But if you'd like, you can add a condition that requires us to submit material samples of the bark and branching beforehand, so you'd be able to see exactly what it looks like.
Okay. And would you be okay with some provision that said no diesel generator on-site except for portable emergency generators brought on-site?
I believe it would be acceptable. I'm not the ultimate okay in this stuff, but I think it would be.
Because I think the concern is that the diesel generator on-site, they have to be run regularly, they're very loud. The other alternative is you just, we put in a decibel limitation to this permit.
Sure. And I apologize, I think part of that confusion is on my part. Initially, we were looking at a generator here, so I included that, you know, blurb in my initial write-up, and then when we removed the generator, I didn't remove the blurb. Everything that you guys are looking at is per the site plans that you have, we're not putting a generator on the site.
Okay, thanks.
So I think that would probably work, if we put it was only allowed on there, brought on for an emergency, not left on-site.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment, is that if you were to prohibit a generator altogether, then you would be prohibiting that property owner from bringing in a generator also when he needed a generator. So I think that requiring it or allowing it only during emergency situations would be appropriate in a condition.
Okay. Any other comments?
So that would be, now, I see you brought something else up. But would that be specifically for the cell tower, or would the owner be able to use a generator for something else?
The owner doesn't need, the owner could bring one in anyway, I think.
Okay, so this is just specifically for the cell tower?
This would be for this, this would be attached to this use permit.
Perfect, thank you.
Just so we're clear on what we intend.
What we're looking at thus far, I believe, is that the tree would be the preference with bark and branch samples, et cetera, that possibly if a generator is not located on-site, could be brought on-site and used in emergency situations.
Yes.
You know, if the battery packs, whatever. And what else do we have?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Who would be reviewing those bark and branch samples and making that determination?
I would think that would be staff, wouldn't it? I don't know.
I mean, it would have, it would have to be staff unless it were going to come back to us.
Heather?
Mr. Ashwin's correct, it would have to be staff unless you want a condition requiring it to come back to the planning commission for approval.
I don't think we need to bring it back to us.
There's, there's a technicality with the law. I'm sorry, Dan Knox for the record, 346 Springview Drive. There's a term called a shot clock, which I'm sure this gentleman's aware of. There is a timing period from the time the application submitted to either it's approved or denied, and there's legal ramifications if we exceed that. So I don't know when this was approved, but if there's going to be an evaluation of the monopole, bark colors and so forth, it needs to be done in a timely manner before that shot clock expires. Thank you.
Maybe you could collaborate there.
Just, just a point of clarification, the shot clock is contingent upon the jurisdiction making a final determination on the application. So your action here today would necessarily be that final action. We can send them this up after the fact.
Okay, good.
Does that help?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your input. Well, plus the additional language on question, on third, condition thirteen, that would be part of it. So, does anyone want to, for the discussion, want to take a shot at this, or? No?
I'm making some notes.
It was just a minute.
Mr. Chair, I can summarize what I heard from the commission.
I was hoping you'd say that, thank you.
I think in terms of condition number seven, you're looking to modify that condition, which, and so it would state that the plan submitted for the building permit shall incorporate the use of a pine tree, the bark samples, and, what's the other sample?
Branching.
Branching shall be submitted to the planning staff in advance of submittal of a building permit for approval of the specifications. You're also looking for a modification to condition thirteen per the staff's recommendation, and an additional condition which would state that generator may not be used except during emergencies.
Well, what, located on-site full-time would be brought in in case of emergencies? Is that more how it would work?
We could certainly say that, that generator shall not be maintained on the leased site except during emergencies.
Yes, that sounds good. I was just going to say, if I made, if we're going to approve it as the mono pine, and I may have missed this, then fourteen should be amended as well.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven feet to cover the dome. It's good to hear also that if someone were then coming on, it's easier to do that with the tree than if it were the other, so. Okay. Now, if someone wants. If you're willing.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve SUP-18166 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report, including the three modifications that we previously discussed. You want me to specify them again, or I think?
I believe there were four modifications with the modification of fourteen.
One for height, one for the generator, one for the-
Condition thirteen.
Condition thirteen, and one for the pine tree.
Correct.
Okay.
Condition seven, thirteen, fourteen, and additional condition that the generator will not be maintained on the leased site except during emergencies.
Yes, ma'am, that's my motion.
I have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Preston, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Two nays.
Two nays and five ayes, correct? Thank you. No?
I'll quote my finding, I find that it doesn't meet the finding of fact that it will not negatively impact surrounding property values, amongst other things, but that is certainly the big one for me.
Thank you.
I guess for this, let me state the appeal process for this. This is, this is a special use permit that's been approved by a split vote. It says, this is the final decision on a special use permit unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within ten days from today, which usually ends up actually being eleven days the Monday following. But if you have a question on how to make an appeal, contact the Planning Division Office to get that information.
Moving on, public hearing E3, SUP-19, yeah, SUP-19-003 for possible action. To consider request for a special use permit to construct a detached garage that results in accessory structures that exceed seventy-five percent of the size of the primary structure and five percent of the lot area. The subject property is located at 1777 Racetrack Road, APN 010-66-211.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. This is a request for sixteen-hundred-and-eighty-one square foot detached garage. The subject property is one-point-oh-nine acres. If you went out to look at the property, it was a little tricky to find it. It was at the corner of Racetrack and Bigelow with, without a number that's easily visible, so you had to go by Shoals Ranch. But hopefully, you were able to find it and see the setting. The applicant is proposing a height of twenty-two feet and three inches for this building. With this building, the cumulative square footage of the accessory buildings will be one-hundred-and-fifty-two percent of the size of the primary residence and five-point-four percent of the lot area. Per section eighteen-oh-five of the code, when the cumulative square footage of accessory buildings exceeds seventy-five percent of the size of the primary structure, it can only occur subject to a special use permit. Additionally, for lots are greater than half an acre, if the cumulative square footage of the accessory buildings is in excess of five percent, it's subject to a special use permit. When the planning commission considers a special use permit, you're considering the seven findings of fact. Staff has reviewed those findings of fact in the staff report, and we have been able to make those findings in the affirmative. Also, I believe in the packet is a letter of support from a neighboring property owner. Architect Jeff Frame and Don Warden and Holly Hawkins are all here on behalf of this application. I'm happy to go in-depth on any of the findings, but I think the larger building is appropriate at this site and won't have, and I can find the findings in the affirmative. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
I have one question.
This, how, where is the flood plain for Clear Creek on, in relationship to the building itself?
I'm referring that question to Stephen Potte.
Stephen Potte, Development Engineering for the record. So there is a floodway and an AE flood zone that follows Clear Creek and that crosses Bigelow. And there is FEMA's Zone X shaded that does go onto the property, that does not restrict construction. The ones that we're worried about are the floodway and the Zone AE, which are quite a ways away. I'll measure that for you while we're here.
It may not restrict construction, but would he then be required to get flood insurance if that was placed on the property?
No.
Oh.
Access wouldn't be impaired based on that location?
Correct.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward, please?
For the record, for the record, Jeff Frame, architect with Frame Architecture. The applicant's submitting, I think it's in the packet why he's doing it. He's got, he's got some custom cars and an RV that he'd like to store on-site right now. One's stored off-site and one's, one's actually stored in the existing garage. One of the things that's offsetting the percentages of accessory buildings to the house is, the existing garage is a detached garage, it's their only garage. So other than that, I thank staff for all their help in the presentation, and we're here to answer any questions.
There's the existing garage, and we have a couple other small, smaller storage-type units. Also, the seventeen conditions, you're okay with all of those?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Bring it back for, oh, yes, thank you, sir. Sorry. Again, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for further discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Doors?
Commissioner Doors for the record, I move to approve SUP-19-003, a request for a special use permit for accessory buildings to exceed seventy-five percent of the size of the primary residence and five percent of the lot area on property zoned mobile home one acre, located at 1777 Racetrack Road, APN 010-662-111, based on findings and subject to conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
We have a motion, do we have a second? From Commissioner Tingle, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nope, seven-zero. Thank you. Good luck. Moving on, E4, SUP-19-006, for possible action, to consider request for a special use permit to allow for advertising signage- request for a special use permit to allow for advertising signage in excess of what is allowed by Carson City Municipal Code in conjunction with a two-unit mobile home complex in the existing Capital Village subdivision. The Capital Village subdivision is located on the northwest corner of Fairview Drive and South Solomon Road, A P N's zero-zero-nine-dash-eight-one-three-oh-one, zero-zero-nine-dash-eight-one-five-oh-one, zero-zero-nine-dash-eight-one-three-two-two, zero-zero-nine-dash-eight-oh-three-oh-one, zero-zero-nine-dash-eight-oh-four-oh-one, zero-zero-nine-dash-eight-one-six-oh-one, zero-zero-nine-dash-eight-three-two-two-nine, zero-zero-nine-dash-eight-three-one-two-three, and zero-zero-nine-dash-eight-three-two-four-two. I think that's the most.
Heather Ferris, again, for the record. Division four of the development standards contains provisions for signs within residential zone. However, in the event the signage will not meet those requirements, variation to the regulations and standards may be permitted subject to approval of a special use permit. The applicant owns the remaining forty-one undeveloped lots in the Capital Village planned unit development. All of these lots are on the interior of the development, and the signage is proposed to help advertise and direct people to the vacant lots and the model homes. This map shows a location and type of signage. The signage includes two banners, one at the entrance and one along the eastern property line, one entry directional sign, one double-sided directional sign at the northeast corner of the development along South Solomon Road, and five smaller directional signs on the interior of the development. Additionally, there will be flags located at the entrance and at each of the model homes. This is a sample of the proposed signage. Staff was able to make all required seven findings in the affirmative as detailed in the staff report. We are recommending approval subject to the conditions of approval included in the staff report. And Mike, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, Sabo with Florsheim Homes, may wish to, he's here and may wish to address the Planning Commission, and with that, I'm available for questions.
Questions for staff?
With the new changes that we just made to the sign ordinance about banners and flags and, are these signs gonna comply with that, or is he asking for a variance for his flags? Because I thought we just eliminated flags.
So it's for a special use permit beyond what is allowed in, in the, in the residential zonings? I believe the banners and flags without, without referencing the code, I believe the banners and flags section speaks specifically to commercial zone districts.
Aren't the banners and flags for this inside the property, not on the outside corners? Like, is that where the other signs were gonna be?
Question of where the signs are gonna be, just going back to hit, to the previous question real quickly, Plummel Community Development Director, the, the amendment you're talking about to the sign ordinance removed flags from exempt signs. And, and so we were in the exempt sign section, so those flags are no longer exempt exceptions for placing them in commercial districts. But as she said, it doesn't prevent somebody from getting a special use permit and using, adding flags in other cases.
I just wanted to make sure we were consistent, that's all.
Commissioner, that's one.
Will, sign A as proposed, will that replace the existing sign at the northeast corner of this project?
I believe that is the sign that's currently at that location.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Nope. Would the applicant like to come forward, please?
For the record, my name is Mike Sabo. I'm representing Florsheim Homes.
Thank you. And you're accepted through all the nine conditions of approval or whatever are fine with you?
Yes, yes, sir.
Anything you'd like to add to what they have already stated, or?
No, I think they, they stated it quite well.
And I, the main reason for this is from the location and with the walls, et cetera, around the property, it's hard to get to those, so I could see why, you know, you're requesting us to get, let people know they're there and where the mobile, or the model homes are. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Formally, any public comment on this item? Seeing none?
I'm confused. Because if, if sign A is already installed, and sign A is just a one side, I believe it's just a one-sided sign on the fence, this one indicates that it's gonna be, you're gonna be able to see it from, coming from the north or the south. Are they gonna, are they gonna turn the sign around, so?
Is sign A one-sided currently? Okay, I missed that when I went by it today. So it will be, it will be an additional double-sided.
Okay, thank you.
I've, I've one procedural question. This permit's good for eighteen months?
Or until the last lot sold.
Or until the last lot sold?
That's correct.
At the end of eighteen months, can they come and renew this, or is it another permit? How would that proceed?
I believe they would have to come back before the commission for another special use permit.
Could we set that just for review rather than if he needs more time to avoid? No?
I don't have a preference, I was just curious.
I'm just, would he have to pay again if he comes back?
I would guess.
Mr. Chair, that, that condition concerning the eighteen months was very important to the staff. The staff was not prepared to support this application without a sunset clause. We recognize the applicant's interest in selling those homes. We recognize the challenge, given the walls and the configuration of the site. That is, so we recognize all that. We don't wanna give these signs with no time limit. And so that's why the eighteen months is there. Should the signs need to remain for more than eighteen months, it would be a revision to the special use permit subject to review by the Planning Commission. And yes, the fee would be seventy-five percent of the fee of the special use permit.
Okay, all right. Interesting. Thank you. Any other comments or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve S U P nineteen-dash-zero-zero-six based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
We have a motion, Commissioner Borders, we have a second? Second from Commissioner Doors, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Good luck. It's all right, we're gonna take a short break, like five minutes before we go into the next item. Thank you. Back in business. Next item. E five, for discussion only, a presentation by the Public Works Division regarding a water use analysis conducted for project water, projected water use and delivery needs for the master plan city build-out scenario. Lee?
Yeah, just a brief introduction before Dan with Public Works introduces Eddie with the Water Department to give the presentation. I just wanna introduce this and say this is a long-awaited, for the Planning Commission. I know we've said we've had this, been gonna, this gonna come for a while, long-awaited water capacity analysis. You tell you, this is, this is really hot off the press with data coming in. I mean, we're, they've gone through and truth, you know, and, and really quality-controlled it from the water side. You know, I'll tell you, from our side and linking this with our land use and the master plan and the number of units, I think we still need to do some work on that. And, and actually because they actually went beyond what our, what the master plan in some cases and the numbers I gave them said, that they've gone at like all possible development on all properties beyond what's kind of really in the master plan right now. So it's a really conservative estimate that they've done, meaning it's, it's accounted for probably more development than our current zoning and master plan would allow. But they've taken this tech, very technical document that you have in your packet, and I think they've put together a really good presentation for you to summarize it, so I'll turn it over to them with that.
Great. Good evening, Commission. Dan Stuckey, as Lee mentioned, Dan Stuckey, City Engineer, for the record. I'm joined here by Eddie Qualer. He's our water manager, our water expert for the city. He's been, I'll let him talk a little bit more about his background when he gets up to talk, but we're really fortunate to have somebody with his level of expertise at the city. He's been here about six months now. So yeah, it's a great, great addition for, for Carson City. Yeah, we thought the crowd at the beginning was for us to talk about water, so a little, yeah, so we're surprised they all left. But uh, yeah, so we, we are, I'm, I would consider myself a water nerd, and Eddie is ultra-water nerd. So as Lee mentioned, it is technical, the, the documents that you saw, it is very technical. We're gonna try to, I mean, if you guys wanna dive into the weeds, we can definitely do that, but we're gonna try to keep it at a high level, and it's late, so we're gonna try to crank through this pretty fast, and hopefully you guys stay interested in it all. So here's just a quick outline. As Lee mentioned, the water usage study, I'm gonna go through, again, at a very high level, the methodology, methodology that was used and the results of that study, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Eddie. We like to take the opportunity, as I mentioned, we're water nerds. We think it's a great opportunity always to talk about our water view, our water system, a quick overview of that, our water portfolio, and then, I mean, this, this usage study kinda ties into our plans for the future, to building a smart future for the city. So Eddie's gonna touch on, on all those towards the end. The purpose of the water usage study, so I wanna make it really clear, we, we're constantly planning, we're always doing projections, so this is really nothing that we haven't done in the past, but with technology the way it is and the way we did this, it's at a level of detail that's more sophisticated than anything we've ever done in the past. And I'll explain a little bit of that. But really, it's gonna serve, we always talk about living models versus like a report you get and you just put on your shelf and never touch again. As Lee mentioned, the, the goal of this is to link it not only with our land use planning, but also with our hydraulic model and have all this integrated, so it's a living, we call it the living model. So it's constantly getting updated as we move, as we look at these developments and move along. So that's, that's really kind of the goal of it, but it's gonna help, it looks at the existing water usage and then projects, projects that out in the build-out scenario. As I mentioned, technology, we were able to leverage a lot of big data sets, historical water usage at a parcel scale. So it's pretty detailed, and then we use G I S systems to do like spatial analysis, so not only knowing the total amount of water usage that we project in the future, but also spatially where that demand is gonna be. And that's a big value to us as far as planning for infrastructure and those types of things. And then, I mean, I kinda hit on this, but you know, just as we come to you and make some decisions, and as we move in the future approving developments, this will constantly get updated. So it's just another nice tool to have for us on the planning side. So I broke it down on a very micro level of what this study does. Here's an example, medium-density residential house here that you can see. And really what this study did was look at two things. We looked at annual water usage, so you can see the little graph there. We analyzed all the meter data over a period of two thousand and fourteen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, and twenty-seventeen, so four years of data. We looked at annual usage as this kind of relates to water rights. We have a certain amount of water rights that we can produce every year, and so we wanted to look at annual water usage at a parcel scale. And so that's what you see there. And then we also look at peak day demand in, in those summer months, because just to give you a feel here, and it shows on this graph, you can see the months starting at January and then, you know, going throughout the year. And you guys know this, but like for right now, in the winter months, we produce about six million gallons per day, and that'll go up to about eighteen during the summer months. So from a production side, we need to be able to meet that demand in those summer months. So when we looked at these individual parcel data sets, we looked at annual usage, and we also looked at that peak day usage over those summer months. Then we took that, so that was a really micro level scale. We took it across the, the figure on the left there, it shows the nineteen different master plan land uses and how the different, each color on that map on the left-hand side there is a different land use. So we did this analysis for each parcel in the city, twenty thousand different parcels. I mean, obviously, this is happening very fast, we're using technology. And then we broke it down, so you can see there's, I mean, each land use has very different types of water usage. So we did a statistical analysis and basically come up, came up with typical water usage, both in average annual demand, but also peak day demand for each of those nineteen different land uses across the city. And so right now, we use about, you know, ten to eleven thousand acre feet of water per year, and we'll talk about that. And then peak production in the summer, in the summer months, as I mentioned, peak day is about eighteen million gallons per day. So then we took that data, and we started to look, how is everything gonna build out? And can we, we can apply the current trends and how we're using water today and project that out in the future. Now, we all know water trends change. And so I wanna reiterate, this is an exercise, we're gonna have to, you know, every couple of years, we need to go. of years, we need to go back, reevaluate data, see what trends are, update our model for projections. Cause we know, you know, there's more efficient, water efficient appliances, different water conservation. I mean, I think that's kind of spreading across the community a little bit. So this will be constantly updated, but we use the trends that we have today, we project out in the future. So as, I'll, I'll show an example here, but for those vacant parcels, however they're zoned in our master plan, we apply a rate of how we, what kind of water usage we think that we'll use in the future. And as Lee mentioned, we went into a lot of detail. So for example, if there was site constraints, terrain where we didn't think it could quite, you know, develop at the rate that it would, that technically per the land use it could develop, we modified the model or redevelopment areas. Say it's, it's not very developed now, but it has, and there's a house on a parcel, but it could fit 10 more houses. We wanted to be conservative in our water projections, so we assumed 10 houses in the future. We also looked at areas where properties are on well right now. And if they were in an area where we thought they could potentially connect in the future without, you know, massive cost to expand infrastructure out to these very rural areas, if we thought it was realistic, we assume that those converted to city water in the future. Again, the predictive, I'll talk a little bit about this example. This, this is the RV resort off Old Hot Springs Road that just happened last, was it last month that you guys saw that? This is a really good prediction. I couldn't believe it. This is our first test of kind of how the model predicted and then an actual example. So you can see the model predicted that that, when that developed, and, and the people that created this for us knew nothing about this. They predicted 63,460 gallons per day. The applicant came in projecting 65,000 and they have a detailed site that they're planning on doing, right? That's within 3%. I don't want, that's, I think, a very unique example. I was very impressed with that, but there's gonna be variability. I mean, you guys know the very different variability that a site can develop and how the water use changes. But I just wanted to show you kind of an example that happened recently of what this model can do. What are the results? So in, if you read the report, there's basically three things that it hit on. And I think Lee's shown these population projections to you guys all in the past, but you know, 80,000 is about what we expect Carson City to build out at. You can see the range there anytime between 2055 and 2085. And that's just because there's different population growth projection rates. So when they looked at it in this report, they kind of looked at how our water usage demand might increase throughout this till 2085. So we have a good timeline there. We also, with the build out condition, we expect to increase annual water usage by about 5,000 acre feet at build out. One thing, we have about 18,000 plus acre feet of water rights secured today, which is a great thing. We have the water rights to, more water rights than we actually need in the, in the build out scenario according to these projections. And this is pretty closely in line with, when I talked about those past studies that we've done, these numbers are pretty similar to that, they just did it kind of different ways. And then the other thing here, like, you know, we're gonna basically project to have to produce about 29 million gallons a day, max day demand in those summer months in the year 2085 is what we anticipate. So that's about 8.9 or, or nine MGDs more than what we produce today. And, and we've got a variety of scenarios and plans for that. And obviously that's happening over a long period of time. And that's where I'm gonna turn it over to Eddie to kind of talk about what we're doing on the planning side.
All right. Well, Eddie Qualiary for the record, it's great to be here. It's great to work for Carson City and it's exciting to work on such a complicated and interesting system. A little background for myself, I was in the private sector for about 10 years designing subdivisions for two of those years and then working on water and wastewater utilities for a number of six years. And then after the economy tanked, I went to work for the Public Utilities Commission regulating water systems and wastewater systems across the state. And learned a good deal about rates and quality of service and the different cross section across the state of that, that utilities face. After that, I spent four years as the water engineer there and then I went to Division Water Resources and worked for the state engineer as the water engine, as the engineering manager there and did water rights and dam safety and worked with water resources. So it's nice to bring my background together here at Carson City and put it to use. It's really, it's really wording as a engineer, as a water nerd, as Dan said. So I'd like to, my, my presentation is gonna kind of zoom out. It's not super hyper focused on parcel to parcel. It's kind of looking at the whole water system. It's, it gets complex when you're looking at a development coming into a certain pressure zone and we have to put a lot of time and effort into looking at if that zone can produce the water we need for that project. And I'd like to commend Dan on this, this study because it gives us a lot more information that we can use in our water model when it gets integrated into the water model on what other demands we could see in that zone. So then we can see how much capacity we actually need to account for and how much that developer needs to bring in, et cetera. So I just wanted to say that to kind of differentiate what I'm gonna talk about to what, what Dan's model did. So now I'll get to my presentation. I'll try to get through this pretty quick. I'm gonna go through kind of a lot of high level stuff, but feel free to stop me if something doesn't make sense. So my presentation is gonna focus on the quicker review on a water facility inventory. I'm gonna go through a water rights versus usage scenarios and then talk about just the, the diversity of the system of our water sources and its importance for resiliency when you talk about drought and whatever else happens. Gonna go over the regional system that's talking about the system from Minden to Dayton and coming through Carson City that's, has been built and is functioning. And then I'm gonna go into a little bit about the groundwater basins that we are overlapping and the, the health of them and kind of their resiliency and everything. And then I'm gonna talk about that max day demand that Dan talked about, the 29 MGD, million gallons per day. And go through some of the projects and the planning that we're doing right now to meet those demands. We have a number of projects that we're actually currently working on so that we can get to that, so we can rest easy and breathe that, that we can supply development that comes in whenever it does, because you want to stay ahead of it. So as, as you guys know. So getting into the water facility inventory, so we have 16 pressure zones, 14 booster pump stations, 14 different water storage tanks, 31 groundwater wells. There's about six that aren't operating right now due to water quality situations at those wells. We're looking at changing that, but that's just the scenario we're working with. We have our surface water treatment plant, Quill, that has a 6.9 MGD rated capacity, but we're only actually functioning at a 1.8 MGD capacity due to water sources and water qualities at Marlet and Hobart Lake. And I'll get into that later. But we have an R-C treatment plant at 1.44 MGD. We have the Douglas County Intertie with the town of Minden, that's a five MGD capacity. There's 44 pressure regulating stations and those are the stations that separate the pressure zones. So the whole city is interconnected, but it's separated and it has to step down the pressure as it, as it gets to the lower elevations in the valley. And then 329 miles of distribution pipe that we're constantly maintaining and fixing and replacing. As you can see, it's quite old. So this, I wanted to show that the map of the system, you've probably seen this before. You can see the, the squares there, the different groundwater basins. And then you see the pipe kind of spider, spider webbing out. That's the distribution system. And then the, the different shaded colors are the pressure zones that we're dealing with. And so each one of those has, you know, different demands and different ways that they're fed water. So some of the projects that I'll talk about in my, later in my slides on how we're gonna meet demand, some of those relate to moving water within those zones or wa, moving water to the zones on the west side, on the left side of that map to be able to move that water to any zone that, that demands it. So, and that's, you've probably heard the east-west transmission main completion. That's what the, the intent of that is to bring that water up into the Quill tank so we can move it up to the Ash tank so that we can then, you can then get water to anywhere in the system from there. You can get that water there. And that's a lot of, you know, the, the on the ground operational complexities that we have to deal with. But, you know, talking in terms of planning, it's, it sometimes gets lost. This shows just an easier graph to see, the, the well scattered around, the triangles are the, the surface water sources that we'll be talking about for water rights and water production. The triangles on the right side are the Carson River wells and that'll come into play here. The star at the bottom is the Sunridge Booster Station. That's where we pump water from Douglas County and Town of Minden. And then the star on the upper right hand corner is the East 50 tank. And that's what is our, that's our connection to Dayton or Lyon County Utilities. Water can even go, water can either go into that tank from Lyon County or into it from Carson City. And that's how we trade water back and forth if it's needed. And then on the left side is the Kings and then Ash and then the Marlet-Hobart Pipeline that brings water in. So talking a little bit about water rights. So as Dan mentioned, 18,648 acre feet annually is in our name. Now those are in, spread out in the different groundwater basins and then also spread out against the surface water sources. So a total of 13,475 groundwater rights spread out amongst Eagle Valley, Dayton Valley, Carson Valley. And then 5,000 spread out amongst the, the river, the creeks, Kings and Ash and Clear Creek. And then the Marlet system, those water rights are actually owned by the state. So we, I don't, we're not considering those part of our repertoire here, but we have access to them, we purchase that water. So that's, so the 18,000 isn't including the 5,000 from, or the, it's actually 3,000 from Marlet and then 7,000 from Franktown Creek. So that's the overview of the water rights. And as you can see up there, the average demand from 2014, 2017 was around 11,000. So I wanted to highlight a little more on, on the, on the water sources that aren't shown in that last graph that are the envy of a lot of utilities that Carson City actually has. And I'd like to commend Carson City for gaining these, you know, before my time here because they're really unique benefits that the state has allowed Carson City to take advantage of. For one, the domestic well credit, that is if a domestic well converts to our system, we get a credit of two acre feet from that domestic well. So we inadvertently get an extra water rights from it. And that State Engineer Order 1202, State Engineer Order 1140 happened during a period of drought, about 10 years from like 86 to 95. The state engineer was looking at curtailing Carson City due to groundwater levels dropping. And he actually allowed Carson City this permit to, in times of that, they could actually pump more for a one-year period if they needed to from Eagle Valley. And in those times, Eagle Valley was the main source. So now that we have a more diverse system, we don't have that problem of relying just on that basin. But in times of extreme drought, we could actually exceed our 6,000 acre feet from Eagle Valley for a one-year period with some restrictions. Another unique thing that we, we have the advantage of having is recharge permits. We have two recharge permits. One is we actually get credit for, and this is water that's coming down that Marlet Pipeline. We have valving up there where we can turn it out and send it down VC Canyon. And that recharges the Eagle Valley groundwater basin. And so we're allowed to, from our permit, we're allowed to recharge it at 700 acre feet per year. And it's basically like a bank account. It's water in the bank. We can, we can pull it out when we need to. Currently we have, we've stored 5,000 acre feet in the Eagle Valley Basin from, from this activity. It's a great opportunity. Tomwa has it, SNWA has it, but Carson City may be the only other utility in Nevada that has this scenario. The other recharge permit we have isn't growing water rights or, or building up a bank account, but we dilute the water in the ground. We send treated water from Quill Treatment Plant into wells along the College, along Winnie. And we have a number of wells there that have high uranium, so we can dilute that water with the, with the good quality surface water that doesn't have uranium in it. So that doesn't build water rights, but it's another kind of unique situation that the water system does to help the groundwater basin and help our water quality. It avoids treatment too, so. So talking about water rights versus usage, as Dan kind of alluded to this, so 18,000 acre feet, we have allocated 1,400 to development already. And that, our usage is around 9,000 currently at, at 2018, the usage has dropped down a little bit. So that leaves us with a balance of 7,000, just for, just for high level example. And that graph shows the, kind of that decreasing demand that we're seeing. So the water portfolio, this is kind of a big topic, but as we've talked about, so we get about 25% of our water from surface water, 75 from groundwater. And what we try to do is maximize, it's called conjunctive management. You try to maximize your surface water when it's available so that you don't have to pump your groundwater. And so projects that we're looking to in the future is trying to maximize that even more to get, to get that level, you know, maybe next to 50/50. So we're working on projects that I'll show you later in, in the presentation that'll, that'll kind of get us closer to that.
Why?
Why is that?
Yeah.
Because this, the, the surface water, you know, in years like this, we should be using the, the surface water, right? We have plenty of snowpack, we're gonna have, we're gonna be just spilling that water into Washoe Valley from Marlet, because we just can't possibly take it. But we'd like to maximize it so that we don't have to pump the groundwater that's, you know, so that you build that groundwater level back up.
Makes sense. So the pumps obviously use energy, so that costs money.
The energy of the pumps, yeah. It's, it's a lot cheaper to use the surface water as well as you're, you know, you're resting that drought supply as your groundwater. Because in the drought, the surface water's not there. You shift that, that portfolio more to groundwater and now you're chipping into the, to the groundwater basin that's maybe not getting recharged. So that's kind of the idea and that's, you know, Tomwa practices that, that's kind of the, the gold standard of, of operating utility. Again, another thing that a lot of utilities don't have, you know, Minden, Garnaville, Douglas, they don't have surface water. So they're all reliant on their groundwater supply.
So basically the groundwater stays there if we aren't using it, we can use it later. If you don't use the surface water, it's just gonna go away and
Right, right. Exactly. That's, that's the, the idea of conjunctive management. So this shows just a, a graphic of what I'm talking about. You have your Marlet-Hobart system, that's where the VC recharge comes into play. And then we, we actually pumped out that surface water we, we recharged out of the groundwater basin, out of Eagle Valley. It shows the Dayton Valley, just kind of a schematic of, of the different sources and kind of the highlighting here is just the uniqueness and the, the, the wide breadth of our water system and the different sources that we have to access. So just kind of give you, put it on a, a graphic. This is showing the regional water system you're all probably very familiar with. The last piece of it is up there, I'll try to, it gets lost on the TV, but it's the last piece from Washington to Quill. And that'll allow us to bring that Minden water straight to where we need to get it to, to spread it out to the zones. Right now it goes into the, the lower zone and gets used and, and moved around and goes into some tanks, but we want to really get it up to those upper zones on the left side of the, the graph that I showed, or the, the map that you all saw. The Dayton connection is, right now it's just used as an emergency. They need water, we can give them water, they pay for it. If we need water, we take it, which we haven't, but we would pay for it. So it's just kind of an emergency connection. So yeah, just wanted to highlight that the, the final phase is underway this summer. So it's really exciting. So it's really exciting. It gives us a lot more flexibility and redundancy and resiliency. Um, so next I was gonna go through, I'll, I'll try to make this quick, because I know you guys want to get home, but um, I want to go through the, the groundwater basins and talk about how that's managed by the state. And I would just say that the diagnos, the diagnosis of the basins are pretty good, I'd say, um, especially in lieu of some other basins throughout the state. Um, but the idea of perennial yield, some people call it sustainable yield, safe yield, but the idea is that it's a fishbowl, that, you know, you're not over pumping the water that's being poured into the fishbowl by rain and moisture. So it's the maximum amount of groundwater that can be salvaged each year over a long term, over a hundred years, without depleting the groundwater reservoir. And so you're seeing that water table not dropping year after year after year, even in average water years. You see that remain the same. And, and the, the um, water levels that I've seen that, it's tracked by the state. We, we provide monthly pump, uh, pumpage reporting and we provide water level reporting every month to the state, showing, and they're tracking it to show that it's staying stable. And if it's not, that's when the state engineer comes in, they, he can curtail. We have a really progressive groundwater uh laws in the state, way more progressive than California, that's just getting their groundwater laws in place. Um, it's on par with Utah and Idaho and Arizona that, you know, the other dry states in the nation. Nevada is the driest state, so it has some of the best um, water laws. Um, so the perennial yields is an actual number. It says, you know, uh, s, uh, nine thousand is your max. If you go over that, you're gonna start depleting the, the basin. And that's what me, that's what it means when a groundwater basin's overpumped. And currently, none of ours are overpumped. And I'll go through that in the next slides. Um, so this is the Eagle Valley groundwater basin. Perennial yield, the first one was set in nineteen sixty-four at forty-nine hundred. And you can see this is, this is straight out of the State Engineers Pumpage Reports that come out every year. This, this uh information's available every year. So the latest one they have is the two thousand sixteen. And you can see that the system yield, and it's, it gets confusing here, but I'll try to uh explain it. The system yield is basically all the streams and creeks and everything, Clear Creek, Ash, Kings, that actually infiltrates through the basin. Um, so the system yield, the total yield is nine thousand. And you can see that we've only gotten close to six thousand in two thousand thirteen and we've dropped every year since. The next basin is Dayton Valley, and this one actually has a range. These things are hard to kind of pinpoint, so having a range is actually probably uh better. A lot of it's uh based on USGS studies. This one was actually based on a, a State Engineer Order um due to a conflict out in Dayton Valley, but it relied on testimony from a USGS employee um to come up with this eight thousand to twenty thousand acre foot range. And the line, so it's, it's dramatically affected by the river and the flows in the river that's actually getting into the ground as well, as well as just rainfall. So if you talk about perennial yield, it's, you're, you're talking about just the rainfall into the, into this uh fishbowl. Um, but this one, you know, it varies based on the river, so they have a range. Um, and you can see, uh, I think it's gotten up to ten thousand, close to ten thousand acre feet. And this is total pumpage. This is including domestic wells. This is everyone pumping. Uh, it's gotten up to ten thousand, so pretty, pretty good in that range right now. Uh, Carson Valley, the last one, this is kind of known as one of the healthier basins in the state, just as far as the groundwater table's just not changing. Um, and it is really influenced by the Carson River through, through this basin. But you can see it's, the, the perennial yield's pretty big. It's forty-nine thousand. It's a big basin, but it just, it gets a lot of uh snow melt and everything from the, from the lake. And it's gotten close to uh forty thousand, so it's still got a pretty good buffer um on, on this, this concept. And, and the idea with groundwater basins is in, in times of drought, it's really kind of drought resilient where you don't see a big change in the water levels, you know, in the first two years of a drought. If a drought goes ten years, or the last one we had was like five years long, um, you saw more of a drop. And that's when the State Engineer gets involved and it, the, the issue has to be, he can curtail pumping and et cetera, et cetera. So the point is, is the, the groundwater basins are, are pretty healthy, as you can see. Um, there are controls on it. Um, we're always watching the levels. Um, we monitor on a daily basis our, our groundwater levels. So I kind of want to move into the, the planning of projects and kind of show you guys what the water system's currently doing to, to uh make sure we can meet these demands when, when they happen. Um, it's kind of ironic, because we're seeing a, a demands kind of decrease, even though our studies will show that, you know, a buildout will have eighty-some thousand people here. Um, when that happens is, is up in the air, right? So, um, currently we're at about twenty MGD. Uh, this, this last year we're a, a, under that, but our max has been about twenty-one MGD that we've uh, the demands that we've seen. And at the buildout, we need to add, as Dan said, eight point nine, nine, nine MGD to meet buildout scenario of twenty-nine MGD. Um, the study goes into a buffer of twenty, adding twenty percent to it. And that's just, you know, good practice. So that would bump us up to thirty-five MGD if we wanted to have, you know, more redundancy and resiliency in the system so that, you know, our big producing well or our water treatment plant goes out for a while, we don't want to be left, you know, on the hook. Um, so you want to build in, you know, some contin, contingency in it. So these next couple of slides will, will show um how we'll get to that in, in projects that we're actually currently working on today. Um, so we're currently gonna uh, uh, re-drill well three, which is one of our best wells, best water quality and best producing. Um, and that'll add one point four MGD. And this graph shows on the left, the MGD, the, the demand, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt.
Mm-hmm.
Where is that well located?
Uh, it's on uh Winnie. And it's near Foothill, uh, near the trails. Um, there's the detention basin right there at Foothill.
Okay.
Um, it's the one with the spigot outside that people come fill, they fill buckets off, because the well, the water quality's so good there.
You're gonna re-drill, is, just go deeper, is it?
We're gonna drill a new well.
A new well?
Yeah, a new well outside the building. So so this, this shows that the red line is our um current, what we can currently produce. It's, it's around twenty-four MGD. So right now at our, you know, you can see twenty-one point seven was our max in fourteen, so we had some buffer even with that. Now we're down to eighteen, so we have even more flexibility. But, you know, as we grow, so I show at like a one percent rate up to two thousand twenty-five, um, not very dramatic. And then you see the, the graph that goes up, the buildout, that pumps it up to twenty-nine uh MGD. So this gets us, you know, bumps up that graph, and that's what this, this next is gonna show. If we re-drill, which we currently have slated for uh two thousand twenty to re-drill well four, it's another really good producing well. It's just we need to find better water quality in it. Currently, we're not using it, but we think that we could, if we study it more and do it, no, a better test well, we can find better water quality in it. And there's ways you can cap off the bad water quality and just get the good water quality. So that would add um another MGD to the, or a plus to the system to get us two point eight. And that's where that line shows you getting closer to that buildout. The, the blue line shows the two projects added together. And then um, we're also looking at the possibilities of adding another induction well. And that's, you know, the surface, the, the, the graph that I show, the two triangles on the right side, we have two wells that are groundwater wells, but they're pumping surface water rights. Um, so it's just another good portfolio mixture that we have on the Carson River. So, um, again, it rests the groundwater ta, uh, tables. So we really, really uh have enjoyed having those supplies. And so this is a new induction well bumping it up to four point nine MGD. And you can see we, with, just with those projects that we're working on today, um, we're above the, the max day demand. You know, now we don't have the buffer still, but, you know, we're, we're getting closer to that. And then there's Quill. So I talked earlier about how we're only using one point eight at a Quill. We can only, we can only treat certain waters that we're getting, Kings Creek, Ash Creek, and a, a portion of, of Marlette Hobart is, is a, actually a collection system of springs called East Slope. And it's different than Marlette water. So what we're try, what we're, we have a, a stud, a contract with Far West right now to study the treatment plant. It's an old technology that needs to be upgraded. And what this study hopefully will do is show us how much it's gonna cost us to bring that, that treatment plant up to capabilities of pump, of treating all the water from those sources. So Marlette Hobart, even the Franktown to Cree water that feeds into Hobart is a, is another uh source. So bringing that up to uh adds another four MGD, we could actually probably go beyond that. Um, but that would, with those three or four projects right now that we're currently working towards, gets us to that, close to that thirty-five MGD, which is the buildout plus the twenty percent reserve that the study talks about. And so this slide just shows you, I should have had this before, but um, it shows that, you know, we have the East-West Transmission Main that's coming this summer. Um, that just, it, that adds resiliency and redundancy to bring that water to the whole system. It doesn't add really capacity. And then we have the well, well three re-drill that we're moving forward. Actually, it's spring now. We're not doing it in the fall. We're gonna try to get it done in the spring. And then well four, we're looking at two thousand twenty, maybe two thousand twenty-one to get that one done. Um, the, the induction well on the river is unknown, but um, we are gonna uh start with some testing to see if there's actually water in the place that we're looking for. There, there's been other studies to look to the north of our wells and they didn't find good producing areas. So we're gonna look to the south and see if there's actually potential there for another induction well. Um, and then the Quill Water Treatment Plan improvements. You know, we have a PER Preliminary Engineer Report currently underway. We're just kicking it off on Monday, actually, to uh study the, the uh treatment system, what we can do for improvements, and then what's the ultimate fix for it? For the, for the water that, the, we're seeing water degre, uh, quality degradation at Marlette and Hobart. And so that's causing us issues, so that's what the, and that water's important because, see, I told you, we're water nerds. I could go on for hours on this stuff. The water, that, that water is important not only for quantity, but for blending. I told you about that recharge permit we have and blending that uranium out of the system and it's really, we use it for a lot of different things. It really becomes important and for the resiliency of the, the system, um, which is just part of that whole portfolio that we've been talking about. So uh, with that, I will kick it off to Dan to close this thing out.
Yeah, so I'll be quick, but just to kind of summarize what we've talked about tonight. Complex and, and, and uh dynamic water system. I mean, again, I want to reiterate Eddie's, you know, it's been great having him come on board and just from an operation standpoint, I mean, twenty-six pressure zones, you look at all the different wells and we got the Quill. I mean, from an operation standpoint, we got a lot of great operators here at Carson City too, great team. Diverse water portfolio, there's a lot of advantages to that, not only groundwater and surface water, but all the different types of sources that we get. It's, it's really good to have that diversity. We talked about, you know, needing the sixteen thousand acre feet annually in the future as far as water rights, and we already have over that today. And not only do we have those, but there's also coming from healthy sources, healthy basins, as um, as Eddie mentioned, that are constantly being monitored. And then, you know, it's not just about production, but I, I think, uh, you know, Eddie mentioned, we, we're already in movement on a lot of these. Um, well, three's going here soon. East-West is gonna be finished this summer. So those will add, you know, production as, as well as just resiliency and redundancy to our system and, and, and help with some operation inefficiencies and all that. So um, we're really, we're all, we're constantly planning for the future. Um, this is a great study. Um, and with that, I'll, I'll, I'll just open it up to questions.
I, we've always, I'm a little confused, because we, we were told we ended up running the line to Douglas and burning the water in to blend it, because we had to, because of the arsenic levels. But then in earlier in this, it mentioned we have an arsenic plant. Now I thought it was to avoid, having an arsenic plant was the reason we were burning the water in from Douglas County.
So the arsenic plant is connected to well forty-nine and well four. There's only two wells that are connected to the arsenic treatment plant. And so those are, it's an isolated, it's just treating water from those two wells. And so we haven't been running the arsenic treatment plant because we're getting that water from Minden. So it's just kind of this, should we run and pay for all these chemicals when we're getting water from Minden now?
So we're still, we're still correcting the statement by saying we're bringing it in so we don't have to run the arsenic plant.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you see any level changes coming from the feds on that again? I mean
I, I hope not. We were just in a meeting with
Any rumblings or anything?
Today, talking about that. And uh, you know, there was talk about moving it down to like five, from ten to five. They went from fifty to ten. And there was e, there was talk five years ago to go even lower, but I don't think anyone could survive that, especially in the west coast here where it's arsenic's prevalent everywhere.
So they went from fifty to ten?
To ten.
But, which is like five hun, four hundred percent?
Yeah, it's a, it was a big deal. I mean, and it was mostly unfunded, so.
It seemed to hurt us growing up, but uh
Yeah.
The one thing I don't see, you know, reflected in here is any kind of recharge. So I, for, as far as the affluent recharge, do we have anything on that too? Because I know that in the seventies, we spent a lot of money actually putting in, into doing the Eagle Valley and this and that in order to recharge the original aquifers. And I just like to see where that is, considering the reason, one of the reasons I ended up back here in Carson City was because I was in Olympia, Washington, and they wanted to know what we did in Carson. So that's something that, you know, I find it's rather unique that Carson started in the seventies, and I just wanted to see, is that still a consideration?
Yeah, as far as um, the, the golf, watering the golf courses, is that, what were you referring to?
Yeah, watering the golf courses, all the ball fields, you know, there was a lot of purple pipe in this town.
Right.
And essentially it was to take the affluent and put it in and recharge, because back in the seventies during the drought, people used to come here to play golf. They used to come play golf from Idaho all over the place, because we had the only green, green, the only green greens around. And it had to do with our affluent actually recharging back into the aquifers and so.
I could speak a little of that, having been involved with Eagle Valley Golf for twenty-five years, that the last few years, there wasn't enough affluent. We were having, they were having, the city was having to change the uh, they changed the uh cemetery and the schools and that back to fresh water and, because there wasn't enough for all the golf courses to even use, but hopefully that's gonna change or is coming back. But that was part of the problem.
It's a, that's a complicated one, and, and there's a new uh wastewater utility manager, Andy Hummel, that um could fill you in more. He's doing studies and stuff just on that topic. And, you know, it, it does help. It, it helps not put in fresh water and taking demand away from our system to, for the golf courses. Um, it's a great, another great attribute that I didn't talk about to our system. You know, we've done, you know, as you fix, it's interesting, as you fix things, you end up with less water, you know? So if you're fixing the uh leaky sewage pipes that would infiltrate water into them during storms, you're now getting less water on the other side for effluent. So it's kind of a, as you make your system tighter, you kind of can lose, you know, it's kind of unatt, unattended consequences, but um, it is a huge resource. I mean, um, there's infiltration that the grass doesn't uptake all the water, so some of it goes into the ground. So um, yeah, there is infiltration due to that and um, it's something that's not reflected in those perennial yields at all.
Well, and that's, that's huge volume too, because Eagle Valley alone in the summers dumping, we're dumping two million gallons a night on
Yeah.
Eagle Valley Golf Course.
Yeah, so
And then you take Silver Oak and Empire and all that, you're probably using five or six million gallons that they aren't using fresh water, so.
Right.
One of the things I just wanted to add to that, as Eddie mentioned, uh, Andy Hummel is our new wastewater uh manager. He's been here about three or four months. One of his first um tasks that he's, he's gonna be putting out here is we're gonna be doing a, a master plan update on our reclaimed system to kind of, like what you talked about, kind of planning for that future, looking at some different scenarios and options of what we can do um to make that a more efficient system and, and better uh planning into the future. So we, that is actively happening right now.
Was Carson Water Sub- Was Carson Water Subconservancy District involved in any of this discussion or information or anything?
As far as the, the specific study, they, they were not...
Be data, anything, had they, they haven't been brought in on any of this?
Not on this study, but I typically, maybe Eddie can jump in, I know typically, more, at least once a year, we give updates to the Subconservancy on, from our, everything from our storm water to reclaim to water systems, where they're getting new data or anything that we've done throughout the year. Those happen at a minimum annually, and probably even more so than that with Eddie and Andy Hummel. So, yeah, they're getting that information.
How do you, or how does the city hold on to water rights that it's not using, when the state requires beneficial use for, for all water?
That's a good question. So there's, so it gets complicated quick, but I'll try to simplify it. So surface water rights can't be forfeited, the forfeiture statutes are in the groundwater statutes. So the only way a, a, a surface water right, you can lose it, is if you abandon it intentionally through the abandonment process. So, so the surface water rights, even if we don't use them, we're not gonna lose them, like the Marlette water, the state's not gonna rip up those permits, because they're a surface water source. So the groundwater permits, if you don't use that, you'll lose it. And so what we do is, we manage our system so that we are always pumping our rights. And so we, we move water rights around, so that we act, we pump them to certain wells, and then we move them again, and it's a constant game. And, you know, I used to do the forfeiture process at the state, so I kind of have an inside track on it. I know how it works, how it doesn't work, but, you know, it's municipalities are kind of a unique situation as far as forfeiture. They still will go after them, you know, I think I sent Carson City a few letters on, on some of that, and it resulted in, you know, giving the utility time to, to use those rights, and, and there's extension processes that you go through. If we were in a pinch, we could file an extension and provide good reason why, you know, why we're not using it, but, but why we need it in the future. So that's kind of the, how you, how, there's flexibility in those, those statutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
F1 Staff Reports, Lee?
Yeah, just briefly going over some items that were before you previously, and were at the Board of Supervisors in February. The Lampa East tentative planned unit development was, was approved by the board at the first meeting. I don't think there were any modifications to it at that meeting, I think, actually a relatively quick item. The zoning map amendment at Hot Springs Road went through, went through first and second reading, that was the commercial property, went through first and second reading in February, and the abandonment on Fifth Street in front of the Bank Saloon was approved. And also, on the February meeting, gave the master plan annual report, which was accepted as recommended, and, and in there, again, as noted earlier, was the Title 18 review, which is gonna be the big item for the, for the Planning Commission this year to start, and that's gonna be with staff, bringing, trying to assemble, trying to figure out how to go through Title 18 comprehensively to look at, and the development standards to look at some things starting this year. For next month's Planning Commission meeting on the 27th, we have a, have a few items, we have an abandonment related to a special use permit project for a 143-unit apartment complex down on that Voltaire Street vicinity, Cochise Street vicinity, is one of, is one of the recent, one of the rezoning properties that you've reviewed in the last few months. And a special use permit for a dog boarding facility on South Carson Street, and a special use permit for a, to continue a billboard. So those are the items for next month for the Planning Commission. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is, we've got, we've gotten information from the Carson High School. If any of you are interested in reviewing senior projects this year, I have some information, just come see me, I have information, and of course, high school be happy to have you.
Commissioner Reports or Comments? I'd like to make one, welcome back, sir. That was very short-lived, I'm glad I made a couple phone calls, but glad you're here, especially going into Title 18.
We're glad you saved your name, Dag.
Yes.
I've, I have one question for Lee. Lee, on, as we go through this Title 18, what's gonna be the approval process? Will we have, will we get, when we get done with it, will we have public hearings, will we, will we approve it and send it forward? You know, what, what's the, what's the approval process that goes with this?
Yeah, with the complete Title 18 update, I, I mean, obviously, there's, there's the process where you make a recommendation, per code, you make a recommendation on Title 18, you have public hearing on that, the board approves it. Your question may be digging deeper, as we have discussions on particular sections of it, when are we gonna get input? And it, you know, I, I haven't, we haven't come up with a precise plan of even, you know, how to get through Title 18, and a, you know, you really just can't say, let's talk about Title 18 in one meeting. I mean, so we're gonna have to bite it off at smaller chunks to, and figure out how to do that. And, and then at some point, our plan would be to bring the public in, and particularly if we, if it's, for example, the commercial properties, you want to start talking to commercial realtors about what sections we're modifying, things like that. But the plan would be to bring the public in beforehand to get the input before you make the final recommendations to the DA's office and the Board of Supervisors.
Basically, I see it more, our, our position is an overview and review, just kind of looking it over and maybe making some comments or suggestions, but staff will be doing the lion's share of the work.
Well, you made, like, you made, a, a good example is accessory dwellings and the size of accessory dwellings. So let's talk about if, let's look at how many we've had, and how many have approved and disapproved, and...
And like Hope and I were talking, you know, maybe it'll be a case of, if you're on five acres, it can be 100% before it has to come to us.
Right, but those are substantive changes that we don't, that deserve some public light and discussion. So we'll, you know, we'll try to point those out and figure out how to get, identify those. I think that's how...
And I know, for example, is, you know, parking is one thing that you have some thoughts and ideas on and whatever, and, you know, we'll look at, that's kind of what we kind of look at, and what's stumbling blocks, what's whatever, so...
So do you anticipate having Planning Commission workshops, so that we can, you know, just throw ideas out and talk about things without having to act on anything, but just, let's, let's figure out, you know, is, is this feasible, or is this not feasible, those kinds of, those kinds of discussions?
Yeah, that's a good, and just, and we're open to suggestions now as to how to do it, so if you have suggestions, let us know. And I would say, you know, start thinking about those things like that in the, in the code that bug you, so that when we get to that point to have some discussion, let's start, maybe we should...
I have my list.
Yeah, it's, it's probably a good, that, that might be a good start, actually, is to just with the discussion, if, if you have some things that you think need to be addressed, we could, we could put those on the list and start there. That would help, and then that might, and then that might go back and help us formulate how to go through the sections of the code to tackle that. That's, that's a good idea.
Any other comments from Commissioner Comments? Public comment? Any public comment at this time? Seeing none, proposed action, a motion for adjournment?
Second.